We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise and if so inclined, join us as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We'll open with the approval of the agenda. Mr. Sampson, do you have anything to add, amend, anything like that? Does anyone else have anything for the cause? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
We have Anna for the reports.
Oh, yeah, we can add Anna to the reports.
If you have a report.
She does now.
Isn't she on there?
Yeah.
Reports and communications, A.
Yes, Anna?
There she is.
Right here.
Oh, there we go.
We are on top of it. Okay, I would look for a motion to approve. Motion by Bill, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. So we open up with some very good news and very positive things for our community, our staff, and a young one. So I'll hand this over to the elementary principal, Jen.
Sure. Well, it's not very often that I get to do this at a board meeting, but Ms. Kelly, if you can come up, please. And Mr. Kyle Herkey. All right, so I have in front of you a lifesaver and the savior here. So, yep, he says, so on December 16th, I was notified after the fact, which was a little bit odd. My nurse had come in and said, oh, did you know Ms. Kelly did the Heimlich today? And I was like, well, no, I didn't actually. So it was, it's such an honor to be able to present with you that award. We did it in front of the staff a couple weeks ago by her own father, Sheriff Kelly. So that is a medal of commendation from the Goodhue County Sheriff's Office. She was presented this award for life-saving efforts. She recognized a student in distress while supervising the cafeteria and quickly took action. And I was sharing with my staff that I happened to be looking at video footage in the cafeteria for a whole other reason, and all of a sudden I see Ms. Kelly afterwards whipping off her jacket and her cardigan, because you could tell that she had just kind of done a little bit of a workout. So it's just, it's extremely an honor to have you on staff, and knowing that that happened is amazing and a life-saving effort, and we're just all really proud of you and proud that you're still here. I think it was a beef stick, and we're just still eating the beef stick. Anyway, we're just, congratulations and just thank you for your efforts. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone got a chance to see her.
Thank you.
Also.
Not right now.
No. Perfect. I put him on the spot a couple weeks ago, so, thank you.
Sarah, thank you so much.
Congratulations to the whole family. It's an exciting time.
Very nice.
Thanks for doing this here.
Not a problem. Herkey, did you want to say anything, or?
We're just so appreciative and so grateful she knew what to do, and he now knows to two be six. Yes. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, reports and communication. Anna, let's lead off with a student rep report.
Okay. I don't have much for you guys today, but dance team just had our big section competition on Saturday, and we made it to state. We got second in both kick and jazz, so we're leaving Thursday after school to head up to Minneapolis. Very excited about that. Student council was selling some crush cans at lunches last week, and today we delivered them during first hour to, like you get to send your friends or crushes a crush can, right? So we did that today, and then we also hung up lots of cheesy pickup lines around the school, if you saw any of those walking in.
I did see those. They were fine.
Yeah. Okay, and then yearbooks, they're still for sale, make sure you buy your yearbooks. We're working on the last deadline now, so that's exciting. And then in the lantern, we're still posting lots of stuff, especially in sports, so if you're wanting to know what's going on in all the sports, check that out. And then also our torch section, which is our middle schoolers on the lantern, are really stepping it up this year. They got a lot of projects going on. They're, one that I'm most excited about is they're doing a fashion show review from their middle school formal, and one of our editors is working on editing that video, so, yeah.
Finished?
Yes.
Any questions for Anna? Thank you, it's nice to see you come back. Next is committee and board reports. Does anyone have any committees that they've been assigned to that you'd like to comment on?
I was just gonna, so, LITC has their first meeting this Thursday, it's the organizational meeting, so I know we should have two representatives on that, so I'll be able to go, but I don't know.
When is, when is it?
Thursday at 6:00 at Zamfroda High School.
We can talk and firm up some things, write together possibly.
I might be coming from work though, so just heads up. Sorry.
Can you come up and get me?
I'll drive back to Cannon and go to Zamfroda.
Okay. Anyone else? Been immersed in the?
I'll say, Ed Foundation has their monthly meeting this Thursday, and I know that they had their purse bingo last weekend, I believe it was, or the first weekend of February, and it was sold out, so I couldn't even get in. They might have let me in, I'm sure. At the VFW, so I think it was a very successful event. I don't know how much there is, but thank them for organizing that.
Did we just maybe get letters recently that they're going on board for their spring fundraiser? Just got something mailed to me here, so are they, they're already in preparation for that, I guess?
They're preparing for their auction.
Their auction is?
April?
Yep. Is gonna be held in person this year again?
Nice to get back to some regular things, huh? Anyone else? Okay, moving down, elementary school. Jen has a input for us, I think. Any comments other than that?
No other comments.
Remember, please take a look at these if you haven't already. If you have any questions for Jen, you can reach out. Middle school, high school, not CMTM, but we have anything for Tim?
No, Tim is not available.
Okay. Community Ed activities, Reed.
Just a couple of quick highlights for Anna, already mentioned, bomber dance team qualified for state, jazz and kick, jazz is Friday, kick will be Saturday, that class A will roughly begin at 11:30 at the Target Center, so congratulations to them. As I noted in the report they sent you, the Three Rivers voted us, or declined our application. Several factors, we feel, with the big, the three big schools being denied to the Big Nine, I think played a factor in that as well, and some of their smaller schools not wanting some of us bigger schools to come in. So that, that's part, we'll see how we move forward and progress, and as soon as I have more to give you, an update, I'll make sure that I share that with you. I've also added that report about the fishing opportunities with the Randolph Reelers. Carson Hamel and I are gonna connect here at some point to discuss about something that we could put together here for next year at Cannon Falls. We're searching, we sent something out on social media, we're looking for more instructors for community ed, also specifically a director for our spring play, so if you are interested or you know of anybody, please contact our office. Section wrestling starts Thursday at, we're the seven seed, the travel to the two seed. We face off against Wasika at 6:00, and then the winner faces a Brodazep shortly after. And lastly, Principal Hodges notified me late last week that we were the Dairy Farmers of America Milk Money Promotion winner of $10,000 towards the athletic department, so I'm not sure who put us in for that, but thank you for that, and we'll take a look at what we can do with those dollars.
That's great. Any other questions for Reed?
I have a question about that. So what will be happening then if we were denied application to the Three Rivers Conference? Will the HVL still be intact?
Yeah, so we still have current, we're still HVL.
How many schools are still?
Currently nine.
Oh, it's still nine?
Yep. We'd like to find at least one more to get to 10, to be able to create divisions.
Okay. Thanks.
Nothing from Dave Peterson. Superintendent's report.
I just have a COVID update. Over the past week or week and a half or so, both of our buildings came out of masking. We are looking at reviewing our safe return plan, and we will have something to talk about a little bit more at the COVID Advisory Committee coming up this Friday, but our numbers are currently looking pretty good in the district as the surge nationwide has come down, and so it's starting to reach the Midwest now, I think, and is declining about as quick as it went up.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? Okay, moving down, consideration to discuss and send ideas to the policy committee regarding policy 206. From time to time, we take a hit, I guess if you will, on policy 206 and just what it's designed to do. There's a clause in there that says, welcome to all speakers and speakers, and I sent you all, some schools in our area that have defined who can speak during public input, and for the most part, it, the ones that I've shown you have either actually delineated which, who can speak, and the other ones just say residents of the school district. There's two or three items on there, and this one is, I think, the most appropriate to speak to, because, you know, there are people that travel and tour around and speak negatively or positively about individual districts. I believe, personally, I believe that belongs in their own district, and people that have concerns for us should be our taxpayers. So that's one of them. The other area is, at the auditorium, somebody got up and spoke from another person's perspective. They got up and read, and I got a couple of people right afterward that thought that was hugely inappropriate. If you show up, you have a right, if you're a taxpayer, to spend a couple minutes with us, but handing it off, I think, is another point of conversation. The third one is, public input, do we assign a timeframe to it? As you well know, we've had quite a bit of public platform, political platform being espoused during our meetings, and I'm not sure this is the appropriate place. When you speak about the social studies standards, I think that belongs probably at the top of the food chain, where every 10 years, they look at the, the social studies outcomes. I don't think it's up to us to have to have discussion about it when we have no input in that as well. So those are the three items that I think we can, we can discuss, and I was hoping we'd certainly lead off with the first topic that we discussed about taxpayers. There's always that conversation about who should speak and if we should have regular interaction by all members of the community when we have a board meeting, and as a representative form of government, I don't think people are allowed to get up and talk at the state legislature when they're in session. I don't think on a national level, people are, can interrupt and talk to people, talk to congressmen when Congress is in session. And if I'm carrying that logic over, once public input is over, this belongs back with the board. So I guess I'm gonna open it up and, and see how you feel first about, you've heard my opinion, how you feel about taxpayers or some form. If a person lives in Minneapolis and he has, and he has property down here, he's probably got a right to speak to us, so it shouldn't be necessary to residents of the community, in my opinion anyway. Anybody got any input?
I'll start off. I guess, I understand your logic, Bob. The only thought that I had was if we had someone that was a special speaker, but then the more I thought about it, they would probably reach out and be put on the agenda if there was a certain topic that needed to be discussed, like we've had the housing level, something of that nature. So I get where you're coming from on the taxpayer resident, someone that's tied to the community and the district itself, rather than becoming just the pulpit, if you will.
The outcome to our conversation this evening, since it is a discussion item, would be to take this to policy when we come to some type of an agreement, that this is our recommendation for policy, policy would discuss it and bring it back to us, and if they confirm that, then I guess we'd, we'd have our readings. When I, when I checked with the MSBA, they seem to indicate if we're gonna make a minor change, we can get it done in one session with one reading, and we don't have to have multiple meetings. But I think, I'm not sure that that's germane if we have three or four things that we're discussing here. Anybody have any opinions here? Jeff, you are, you're an ex-official, you don't vote, but I'd like your opinion.
I've seen other districts use just the taxpayer piece or residence piece, or even people in general that have students in the district, whether they live in district or open enroll into the district. I think those classifications have a vested interest in the district, could be my thoughts.
Yeah, that's true, for open enrollment, wouldn't necessarily be a taxpayer in this district. Be resident, taxpayer, or student. Or have a student in the district.
Have a student. I think it was Oatana was the one I shared you that had five criteria.
So I do have a question. Do we just not have a 206 policy, or is this our current 206 policy?
We have a 206, but it's boilerplate, so it's what was recommended. It was recommended overall as part of our procedure, so we had to have one in place, so we just?
Right, so is this it right here, the one that we have posted?
Yeah.
So we're just looking to add to it?
Re-raise. Re-raise it. Yep.
Because we don't have anything in there that says a speaker has to be from a certain spot.
Right.
So I think we're just looking at clarifying who has a vested interest to speak during that time, right?
Yes.
What I'm hearing.
Anyone, anyone else want to reach out there? Do we use, do we copy somebody else's when it comes to those enlist criteria, like one of the schools has?
I think it'd be appropriate, I liked the three that Brenda mentioned, the taxpayer, resident?
Resident.
Or student.
Or have a student in the district.
Or open enroll, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they have a student, it can be the resident or open enroll.
Yeah, I mean, there's separated parents too, that would be a potential issue.
How about the time allotment? That is another flexible area for us. We've had three to five minutes, but I think it's, when people get on their, their platform of speaking, it, it can exceed that or certainly come close. We've even had an issue where somebody began a reading platform, then they hand it over to a second person who handed it over to a third person. I think that violates the spirit of what we're trying to do.
Sure.
And I don't, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but I just think if we, a maximum of three minutes? Can you get your opinion out in three minutes?
Could we split the difference and suggest four? I think three minutes is pretty, I mean, I'm pretty long-winded, so I don't know, three minutes would be hard for me, but I feel like five, you kind of start to, you're off course.
Yeah, or keep it to the, keep it the three to five and just be a little more, set a timer, I, you know, like, I, I think you need a time limit, just because otherwise it would, it could potentially go on forever, and you would never get to the real, you know, like, all of the big stuff in the agenda.
Mr. Sampson has used his phone in the past.
Right.
And I can hear it from here.
Right.
But I want to give it people an opportunity to?
To finish the sentence, yes.
Yeah.
And, but where does that thought end?
But if we, if we say something about a?
You're allowed to finish a concluding sentence.
Or you can conclude your sentence at five minutes, or at five minutes you need to conclude your sentence, and we will be moving on, or I don't know how you?
You get a big clock.
You don't want it to get too wordy either.
I think, where did I see that Rochester actually has a timer?
They do.
Up front, where somebody just presses a button and?
And what goes off?
You may not see it.
Yeah. Something where it's like visible, maybe?
To the speaker.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do want to give people that have a vested interest in our school, and, and parents who have some concerns, and even others who have some concerns within our district, to be able to?
Yeah.
To be able to speak to that, so we don't want to cut anybody off, but at the same time, five minutes on a political platform seems extremely long.
Yeah, but?
Very few people would use five minutes, though, I think that would be the exception.
Yeah.
But having a limited timing would be good.
What if we use those three readers that were here, they exceeded five minutes, and so, I don't know, I don't know.
Or like saying no handoff, or, I don't know, yeah.
I think at this point in time, can we make recommendations?
Yeah.
That Jeff can take or hand over to the policy committee for review? So number one, you're okay with the taxpayer conversation, the three or four circumstances involved? And you're okay on a time limit if it happens to be reduced to two to four, or whatever?
You can do that, you can do that.
Three to five.
I still feel like three to five is good, I mean, I think, I'm just thinking about what Brenda said, where, I mean, five feels to be on the extreme end of it, but I would hate to cut off somebody that needs it.
Say if I'm individual or representing a group?
Yep.
Limit it to the five, so you can have three people from the same group handing off like that. Same topic.
Yeah, I think, I think three to five is, is plenty. I don't think we need to provide the people with a timer that they can see, I think they just have to understand that five minutes is, I don't think we should spend money on a timer or a?
I was just thinking we could put something on?
Or if we could, yeah, put something on there, like, you know, like one of those, like, just like a stop, yeah.
Hey, we just got 10 grand for the sports department, we can buy a nice clock with that.
Shot clock.
Okay, what was our, what was our other one?
Those two items?
I think, I think you should, if you have something to say, you should submit a letter or be there. I don't, I don't like the idea of having someone read for your public comment.
Yes. Well, I feel, I'm just, I think sometimes you have to be careful about sort of basing sort of policy around specific things, like I think good policy is built, be proactive of the spirit of what we're trying to do in mind. I think we could get really prescriptive when we think back on certain things and try to build something around that, if that, does that, if that makes sense. So I feel like, when I read 206, I feel like the, the, the spirit of what we're trying to get at is in here, I think we need this sort of caveat of who has a vested interest, adding the clarification of a time allotment, but when you look through the policy, I mean, it still says it has to be sort of, you know, relevant to what we're, we're speaking about. You know, I think we can include pieces about, you know, if it's not, you know, relevant, what we would do about it, but I don't necessarily know that somebody needs to have to submit, you know, in writing what, what they're saying. I don't know if we want that. Oh, no, I think he means, he means?
I'm just saying, if, if you have something, you're saying you can't be at the meeting?
Yeah.
If you can't be at the meeting, just submit.
Speak for yourself, yeah. Okay, sorry, yeah.
I think that is, that intent is in the policy, it says persons who wish to address the school board on a particular subject should identify the subject and identify agenda items to which their comments were taken.
Yeah.
So that's speaking as to somebody being there, not a proxy.
What if you, they're representing a group, though, I mean, this was an individual, but if a group wanted to put a statement together, one person could?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's addressed in there as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think 206 is a good policy, I just think it needed those couple of pieces of what we just talked about in terms of the time and who has a vested interest.
Yeah.
It's interesting, because they, they did have a variety of things from various schools, and one was, said you must submit something to the superintendent days before. Another board says, we're gonna hold a forum prior to the start of the regular board meeting, let's say at 5:30 to 6:00, that'll be your opportunity to speak to the board. And there's, there's a third one that just requires people, if there's a multitude of people speaking on the same, name one, name two, and have them speak to us as a group, because then you get people that are regurgitating, if you will, same thing time and time again. So I don't know if, if having people submit ahead of time feels right to me, but at the same time, I can understand that something must have precipitated that from that particular district.
Well, I think, you know, addressing the meeting where they pass the document off, that kind of speaks to item number four and 206. So are they speaking on behalf of themselves or an organization? And the organization, we're gonna request one or two people to speak for that organization for what? In that example, it was reading one person's letter and?
A letter that had already been submitted to the district.
Right. And so then they were just getting it in the public, I guess, video, I guess, if you will.
A platform, if you will.
A platform, so I think you're going down the right path as far as, you know, having a person. The three to five minutes makes sense. We've talked about this once before, and the idea that, you know, we're here to do the school's business, but also here from the public, and we still want to get back to our business, and so you still have the right to modify it based upon the agenda. So I don't, I don't think you need to be concerned about the three to five.
Who's our policy people?
Well, it's gonna be me on the committee.
And Luke is the alternate. Knowing what we know and what Jeff has written down, this might be a work in progress, we might like this for the next eight or nine months, and then see that there's something else we should add or amend to that. So if you're comfortable with these items right here, we can go in that direction. For now, have the policy committee take a look at it and bring it back to us. Jeff? Yeah? Sound good?
I just think it's important to clarify, because I don't want anything getting taken out of context, like these revisions are a normal part of policy review, and I think it's coming from a place of wanting to have that open dialogue and conversation, knowing that there's been some instances where we haven't been able to fully do that under our current policy. So I mean, I think we're doing this with the spirit of keeping this, recognizing public input is an important part of this meeting, but how we structure that to make sure we're getting meaningful, you know, information, and having that opportunity to listen is important.
Yep.
We've never had to visit this before, as, as straightforward as we are right now, and there's, there is a reason behind that, so we certainly like to welcome anybody that likes to speak to the district, but not on a political platform.
Yep.
So I guess we'll just turn this over to the policy committee from here, and when they convene, you all, all okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything to add, Jen? Anything to add, Jeff?
No, we'll get a policy committee convened here relatively shortly, and hopefully they can do the work and bring something back.
Okay, having said that, policy input, public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with building administrators and/or the superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and may not exceed three to five minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate in those three to five minutes, but will take the information and find answers if that is appropriate. As part of the board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage character in character assassination at a public board meeting. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the board about any particular item of concern for them? Sure.
Jack? Sure, Jack Schlichting. First off, I gotta say, Chairman Britton, you made a comment about the value of the school as a community member, and I completely agree. And I want to compliment the board or thank them for using a local vendor for the snow removal. So I would ask, is it possible for the board to revisit their food policy for the bakery to support that business? I understand the peanut allergy, but I'm a type one diabetic. I have to watch sugar, and I know you provide diabetics here, and I know there are sugar treats in the foods, and they have to skip them. So is it possible we could maybe revisit, support a local business, have the bakery provide a bulk of the bread, and then have bread that is made in peanut-free facilities? Because that is a legitimate allergy. And then, that's my main issue, I guess, and then, of course, since you were victorious on the referendum, I'm very much looking forward to when it's completed, to hear how a lot of the HVAC is settled and where we can look forward and what we could be looking for having to be addressed in the future, if it cannot be in maintenance, so that my frustration from 2017, last year, and this year does not occur in five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diane?
Diane Johnson. First of all, my compliments and thanks to the school board for running an incredibly good referendum campaign. I saw the flyers that were put out that were very informative. I thought they cleared up issues very well, and I also know our superintendent went out to many, many meetings and addressed groups and answered questions as they came up. So, a job well done. And I had a second thing, and now, of course, it's completely gone. Well, and I do think the policy, in terms of public input, is probably good to review and to clean up, and I know there's a, you know, that statement, which I've read many times, by the time you get done going through all the privacy things, you know, and your eyes are going kind of crossways, if there is anything pertinent that would help, of course, by that time you're like, okay, okay. So if you do come up with some nice, clear little things, maybe move it to the beginning, put it somewhere in bold print so we can find it without, you know, going totally nuts. But good job.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we'll close the public input. You know, I, Diane made a nice statement about thanking the board, but it wasn't all board. Bill, you and I talked about that.
Yeah, and I think, thank you, Diane, for acknowledging the referendum, but I thank these two individuals personally, but I also want to publicly thank Kelly Miller and Mark Chilquist for organizing the meetings that Jeff went out on and really the Vote Yes Committee. I think there's a lot of time spent, a lot of effort by those two individuals.
Yeah, I'll say that the committee did an excellent job. I attended one of the meetings and, you know, sending out, signed up for everyone, make sure that meetings attended, representation of the board and people from the committee. It was, they did a really fantastic job getting the word out.
Yeah, I know Mark attended several meetings, and I got at least three or four phone calls from that Miller woman, who said, who's coming to the meeting tomorrow? I've got it all set up. And so that was thrown in the chairman's lap to find someone, but she did yeoman's work in scheduling things as well. So, you're right. Thanks to both of them.
Yeah, social media, Facebook.
Yeah, I would say the marketing that was done and the website was incredible. It was just really well done, and I'd like to thank Jeff, too. The amount of meetings I saw him at and knew he was going to was a lot, so it wasn't easy lifting, and so thank you for that.
I'd like to thank the teachers, too. They did a lot of...
Well, thanks.
Yes, they did a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff.
With the informational campaign, the phone banking to make sure that people understood what they were voting on.
Yep. I personally got a couple of phone calls.
ISG and Sue Peterson did a great job of organizing that informational campaign. It's, you know, it's easy as the superintendent to say, yeah, I directed all that. No, it was a team effort, and everybody had their part in getting that information out to inform the public, so...
I'd like to thank the public, too, for voting.
For coming out.
Yeah, I mean, it was...
It was a very good turnout.
Yeah. Through all the noise, I think the community showed support. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it was interesting that the beacon reached out for some Q and A after it was over, and they said, we didn't, we didn't see any euphoria in the council chambers after the vote. And I said, you may not have seen that, but there's a great deal of relief there. We had heard all the way along about how positive the community was for this, but, you know, until you actually see it. So, yeah. Good all the way around. We can feel good for just a better time, and then back to work.
Okay, I didn't realize that we were allowed to have euphoria, so...
Well, we could have done it, but again, relief is...
Yeah, it's more of where it was.
So, we now need to canvass the February 8, 2022 election results, and the first thing we need to do is make a motion to approve, get a second, and then have a resolution meeting, I believe.
Make the motion to approve.
Brenda, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? Clerk, did you figure out how much you have to read here, in its entirety?
It's all of it.
Okay.
All right. Resolution related to canvassing returns of special election. Be it resolved by School Board of Independent School District Number 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota, that the special election held in and for the school district on February 8, 2022, was in all respects duly and legally called and held. The returns thereof have been duly canvassed, and the votes cast at the special election for and against the question submitted to the electors were as follows. School District, question one, approval of capital project levy authorization for technology. The Board of Independent School District Number 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota, has proposed capital project levy authorization in the maximum amount of 3.137% times the net tax capacity of the school district to provide funds for the acquisition and installation of technology. The proposed capital project levy authorization will raise approximately $400,000 for taxes first levied in 2022 payable in 2023, and would be authorized for 10 years. The estimated total cost of the project to be funded over that time period is approximately $4 million. Shall the capital project levy authorization to fund technology proposed by the Board of Independent School District Number 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota, be approved? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Yes votes, 1,137. No votes, 530. Spoiled, defective, or blank ballots, two. Total votes, 1,669. The ballot question, having received the approval of a majority of the votes cast, is hereby declared to have carried. School District, question two, approval of school building bonds. Shall the Board of Independent School District Number 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota, be authorized to issue general obligation school building bonds in an amount not to exceed $7,985,000 for the acquisition and betterment of the school sites and facilities? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Yes votes, 1,171. No votes, 495. Spoiled, defective, or blank ballots, three. Total votes, 1,669. The ballot question, having received the approval of a majority of the votes cast, is hereby declared to have carried. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A07, Subdivision 3A, the clerk is hereby instructed to notify the Commissioner of Education of the results of the special election and to provide the certified vote totals for each ballot question in written form within 15 days after the results have been certified by the board. Upon vote being taken there on the... Okay. So, we'll do a roll call. Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. Thank you. That passes by a six-zero vote. Again, congratulations to everyone that was involved. Moving down, consideration to approve a resignation letter effective January 31 of 2022.
This is from Linda Boss, and I would recommend approval on that.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Bill. Second?
Second.
Katie?
Rebecca, that was me. That wasn't quick enough. I was surprised I got it there.
Second by Rebecca. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval, or all in favor of approving the resignation letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the 2223 Facility Use Agreement with the Cannon Valley Senior Center.
This is a tabled item from one of the last meetings, I believe it was the 24th of January meeting, that you wanted brought back here for discussion.
So let's discuss. Sometimes everything isn't measured by dollars and cents, and even though we're in a dollars and cents climate, I think it's incumbent on us to look to the senior citizens who occupy our building rent-free to continue to do so. There are users of our facility on a constant basis. I think they do a nice job of keeping it up as much as they can with the help of our local custodians or school district custodians, but I'm really in favor, strongly in favor of continuing the facility use agreement as shown. That's my statement.
Well, I had requested this item to be tabled based upon a referendum, and I think it needed to be said that the senior center group supported us in this referendum. They were out and about, were part of the committee also. And I think the public really understands now what it takes to run the CCC. It's, you know, it was put in black and white, and I think it's important for the community to also understand that senior centers giving benefits to seniors, and they're part of this district, and the district also gets the benefits of that building, and now we're going to be able to maintain it, fix the roof, and move forward. So, I think the seniors deserve to continue on the agreement that we've had in place. I think as we move forward, we've asked in the past for the books. It was pretty clear that they didn't have a lot of money, and so I think their organization will continue to develop their finances as we are.
I think the senior center really helped get the word out, too, and helped educate the community on what the community center is used for, all the different things that are going on there, aside from just their use of it, and where the district really depends on it as well for sports and other activities. So that was really instrumental, I think, in helping with the referendum passed, too.
Anyone else?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Bill, make the motion to approve the 2223 Facility Use Agreement with the Cannon Valley Senior Center, correct?
I'll second it.
Seconded by?
Katie.
Katie? I gotta look over. Other discussion? All in favor of the Facility Use Agreement with the Cannon Valley Senior Center? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution from the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee, 124D78.
This is a resolution that the board needs to pass each year. As all of you know, that we do have an American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. By statute, based on the number of Native American students that we do have in the district, there is some annual compliance that goes along with that. Bill is a part of that committee, so I don't know if you want to speak to that compliance part and then maybe some other activities that they have.
Sure, sure. As far as the requirement for the consensus, we had the meeting, and it was unanimously approved that the district is in consensus of following the policy. So, Stephen Strauss, who's the coordinator for the committee, just gave me some highlights. Missy Clapper's class, she's connected to a tribal leader in South Dakota, and he chose to come visit the school, and sixth-grade students and some American Indian students at the high school attended, and I think there was a lot of interest there. He was speaking around the Dakota language. And the second activity was a farmer with a passionate history around, and he brought a teepee and set it up in the back, and there was a lot of interest in that item, that activity also. And he learned a lot of history about his land and the animals and the people that used to live there. He seems to have found a lot of artifacts on his property. Stephen still continues to meet with high school students. It's going well, making sure that they're on track with graduation, applications, scholarships, et cetera. They're looking to do a spring family engagement night, which could include Prairie Island or Shakopee. And as I mentioned, there's a unanimous vote of concurrence.
If you didn't get a chance to see the teepee that was set up in the front lawn by the tennis courts, that was, that was pretty impressive, and how quick it went up and when it was all over with, how quickly it went back down. So, pretty neat, pretty neat speaker that Miss Clapper brought up.
So would we vote, are we voting on all three of these at the same time?
You're voting on a resolution that encompasses...
All three of those?
Yep. And so here's the...
I think around page 20. Resolution?
Yep.
You know, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution, and then we'll have it read into the minutes.
I'll make the approval.
Move by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Rebecca. Other discussion? Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
The American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution. Whereas the school board or district has an AIPAC composed of parent guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and paraprofessionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming, and American Indian representatives from the community. Whereas the school board or district affords the AIPAC the necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of the American Indian children... education and the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the school and program, and whereas the AIPAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian education program planning, and whereas the AIPAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the AIPAC concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota Statute Section 124D.78, and that the school board and the district are meeting the needs of American Indian students.
And the Parent Advisory Committee has already concurred with this, so the Board is voting to agree as well and send this on to the state. And I'll need your signature later tonight after the meeting.
Okay. So, yes, vote would be to approve the resolution.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes. Luke?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes by a six-zero vote. We do mid-year evaluations and year-end evaluations of our superintendent. In the past, he's given a, we've given him criteria along with his input as part of our procedure to be in compliance with the MSBA and policy and statute. At this time, we'll be going into closed session, and that means everyone exits here with the exception of the Board. When we're finished with the evaluation, we'll reopen the session, only to close it for the end of the meeting. So, if you wish to stay and wait in the hallway for us to get done with the evaluation discussion, you're certainly open to do that. Otherwise, the only thing we'll be doing procedurally after this is to close the meeting entirely. So, at this time, I would like to, a motion to close the session for the evaluation.
Make a motion. Close first.
Rebecca?
I'll second.
And seconded by Luke. So, if you'll excuse us. Okay, any other discussion?
Hey, Jack, do you have those signature items you can bring up here?